...a survey that we don't know about. It's a rhetorical question, I guess, because the survey that I think we're all referring to is that guy on the wall, and yes, this does not say Rock Street, but it was added after the fact, and I've addressed those concerns already, so I don't, I'm confused. The other thing is, is I still don't understand what proof there is that the city, or Mr. Williams, or Marber Flats, or Parks for that matter, has that they have an easement through there, or that the city owns it. And one of my last points is, is it's not very apparent when you go out there that there was a road there, and all of you were there, every single one of you, save one, was at my property, and you know that there is no road there. One other thing I would like to say, and it's really, really frustrating to me, and I know no one's going to believe me because I'm not an attorney, however, Mr. Schoen even concedes that just because an ingress or egress is closed, it does not constitute a taking. I would invite, and I've got a copy of it here, and I've got 10 copies of it at home, the Wright versus Monticello, is, does not apply in this case, and I would rather submit, if you've ever looked at Weisenbach versus Kirk, which is eight years newer, Arkansas Code 14-18-107B only preserves ingress and egress rights to any lots in the addition, not abutting the roads, and they have to be, and it's okay if they have other means of ingress and egress available. So I would, I would, I would invite any attorneys involved in this to look at these case laws, and maybe be ready, if we're contacting you, to be able to explain why this constitutes a taking. It's scaring. It scared the Parks Commission into voting the way they voted, they were dumbfounded. Beverly had to be the one to make them make a decision because two motions failed at the table. And, and, and I don't understand this scare tactic of the city's going to have to pay, because it is not proven by any stretch of the imagination that the city is going to have to pay to vacate the street, which I'm not even asking you for. I'm not asking you to vacate. And I respect your decision not to take action, and we knew this was going to probably end up in court anyway. So I really, truly, honestly apologize for wasting all of your time, not only for the site visit that came out. I know it's hard to swallow for me to come up here and say that you don't own this. I mean, I've been scared, I'm sweating to death, and it's a scary thing to come up in front of y'all and say, "You don't own this property." But that's what my research shows, and that's the way I'm pursuing this. And as far as negotiating with these folks, I approached Mr. Bland last summer, and it did not go very well. I left his office, I approached Bruce, and we were told last time at the planning meeting that we could go ahead and speak to their attorney if we wanted to negotiate. I don't want to talk to an attorney. I like to talk to people. So, I mean, if we're going to end up, no offense, I didn't do that.
Hertz done it.
But I just, I want to sit down and have a coffee or a beer and talk about it. I don't, I don't, anyway, I'm done. Thank you so much, I'm sorry I'm frustrating.
Can you call the question?
Beer time.
Go ahead.
Call the question.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carried.
The motion on, we have to vote on the motion now.
That was just called to take no action.
Okay, all in favor of taking no action on this matter, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank all the parties for showing up today.
We thank the council, too.
Can we all have beer and get together and talk?
We've been trying for years.
My place.
And invite me.
Okay. Let me get all this stuff out of here, okay?
Move to take a 10-minute recess?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? (noise)
We will be addressing the original number one under unfinished business town hall meeting outline. Motion to discuss.
Motion. Second.
Doors open.
Uh, did we meet another time since? Yes, we have met another time.
Yes, we did, at your place.
Uh, right, and we firmed up everything with the facilitator, we got an agenda, it will be council and department heads, not department heads, I'm sorry, commission chairs. And I've contacted Andy at Chelsea's, and he's been gracious enough to provide a number of pizzas for us. Pizzas will be delivered at 6 o'clock, so the general public needs to know that be there at 6, because
Oh, at 7, I thought.
Because by 6:15, who knows what will have happened. The event does start at 6:30, but there'll be food provided graciously by Chelsea's Cafe. And, Mr. Mitchell?
That's, that's about it. We have an outline, kind of a tentative timeline. The more people that show up when we get to the general discussion or the open-mic session, the, the opportunity for questions will be there, and there is a little bit of latitude in those timeframes, so don't think that just because there are timeframes allocated, that that was carved in stone, that was just so we could move the process along. We're highly encouraging any of the citizens that have a vested interest to please participate.
Mr. McLean. What time do you want us there?
I, 6:30, because we want to start sharp at 6:30.
So we need to be earlier?
So earlier would be better, if you wanted some pizza or to get a drink of water or something.
Well, to get up on stage and get mic'd up.
About 15 after 6 would be great.
Mr. DeVito.
And one thing, in all fairness to the residents of Eureka Springs, the initial public comments will be restricted to residents of Eureka Springs. If there's any time left, we'll be glad to hear from people that live outside of the city, but the stakeholders in this town hall meeting are the residents of Eureka Springs, and as such, they are going to be afforded the first chance to speak.
Anything else? If not, thank you. Moves us on to number three. Number two is still postponed till December, or September. Moves us on to the second reading of ordinance 2187, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Doors open. Mr. DeVito.
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2187 on its second reading by title only. Second, anybody?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Stand by.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance 2187, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code, Chapter 5.12, recycling glass and cardboard by restaurants and bars.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2187 on its second reading.
Second.
When do we discuss?
Second.
Right now, you can discuss.
Now we discuss.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Snyder.
Still having a problem with mandatory. God. I, I just, I think we're asking our people to police neighbor by neighbor unless we can work something out with the recycle company, whatever they are, um, you know, that can hear glass crashing around them, they pick up bags or pick up the little square doohickey. Really, really, really hate this mandatory thing. Isn't, I mean, I'm glad we at least are giving a first warning and some, and stuff, but isn't there something we can do to, I don't know, enforce, enforce without making mandatory? I don't like the policing by neighbor stuff, and I'm 1,000% behind recycling.
Mr. Mitchell.
Again, I think I mentioned it last time, there's, there is just a very, very small percentage of the population that will require the mandatory. Most everybody does it voluntarily, they do it great, they do a wonderful job, it's the number of people that would be involved, that would even come close to mandatory, would only be involved with that because they just aren't going to, and it's the only way to get it to happen. Because there's just so, so many people out there that just aren't going to do it unless they're absolutely told, so, it's life.
Mr. McClung.
Did we not amend it first time, no foul?
Yes.
Warning first, fine second.
Yeah, you know, personally, I think it's going to be very difficult to enforce, however, you know, if people are going to ignore it and continue business as usual, they're going to do it, so, I mean, that's no reason why not to approve it.
You prefer discussion on? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye, no.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Okay, let's try this again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Four and two.
We're two. Get rid of mandatory, and I'm good.
Okay. Moves us on to number four, discussion of 80 Mountain Street rezoning, two C3 from an R1.
Motion to discuss. Second.
Doors open. Yes.
This is a little complex, it's probably going to require Beverly a little bit, too. I, I'm not too sure that we even need to be discussing what's here, except for, let me break it down this way, for religious purposes. It was my understanding, I don't know if we want to actually remove it from R1 for religious purposes, because I, my understanding is there has been, or there is going to be some religious activity there, either through weddings, if weddings are considered religious, and/or some workshops, and possibly some services going on, so that needs to be clarified. The, the second thing is, is when I was checking with planning the other day, they came up with a definition and had asked to have it forwarded, and we asked that earlier of Beverly, for some reason that's not on here, but there is a definition that was supposed to come to council tonight that was defining theater, that may be at the point now, since the attorney and the police chief have weighed in on the topic and found that in fact, under C3, there was a statement there that allowed the Gabbioli Chapel and the Intrigue Theater to operate based on the current C3. There, there is also two other concerns in C3 as listed in the zoning, and that is, there are some restrictions as to operating times from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and then there's another one on the issue of animals. And I, I don't know if we have to make it a motion, or it can be a request of planning to certainly look into those two issues, the hours of operation and animals, because if you take a look at all of the C3 zoning within the city of Eureka Springs, there's a little over 25 tourist lodgings, two restaurants, and a library that fall in C3. And if you want to restrict the hours of operation from 7:00 to 9:00, what do you do with one particular restaurant that, that has a very large clientele? And then also, does that mean that the tourist lodging can't check people in after 9:00 at night? And then what do you do with tourist lodgings that allow guests to bring dogs? Is that against the ordinance, too? So I'm not too sure that it wouldn't be wise for council, based on this topic, to send it back to planning with, and ask them to go back through it and clarify the animal issue, the timing issue, and what happened to that definition that came out of planning last time.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, go ahead and state your motion in its entirety.
Yes, sir. It, it, my motion would be to request that planning take up the topic of zoning in C3 specific to the issue of animals, hours of operation, and the definition that they had passed at planning last time.
And this, second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
May I ask a question? It has been a mystery to me that it would ever be asked to formally have council take something out of R1, an R1 list that simply, it doesn't apply anymore. So in the next round of codification, if something is no longer in a zone, it simply is taken out of the code. It, it has been a puzzle to me why council was ever asked to take something off of a list that no longer applies. Why would council have to take it off the list? It is off the list. It simply needs to be removed from the code. Gabbioli is no longer in R1. It is no longer a building used for religious purposes in R1. So in the next round of codification, why not just take it off the list? Because it doesn't apply anymore. Why does it take formal action by council?
Will it never?
It just doesn't apply anymore.
So does that mean our city clerk can change our codes?
I mean, No. You as the legal counsel, I mean, if it would have went through an ordinance that changed it back to C3, then I could see how that applied, but we couldn't find that ordinance. What do you think?
Those lists are typically adopted, and I believe this one was adopted as part of an ordinance. The only way to technically remove it is to pass another ordinance changing it.
And that the sign?
Point of order, I'd prefer that the city clerk not engage in this at this time, this is not a proper procedure.
Okay. Can, you can address it within, during hours, if you want to go ahead and do that.
Why is it not appropriate for me to ask a question about procedure?
It's, we've already finished with this issue, we've sent it back to council. You can ask one of us to get something on the agenda, we'll be happy to listen to you at this time. This issue has moved on to the next topic.
It has been voted on and passed. Right, that moves us to number five, the discussion of ordinance 2186, third read, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Doors open. Mr. DeVito.
Move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2186 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Is that real call, or?
Suspend the rules. If I may.
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
And that was unnecessary.
Mr. Perkypile?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Six zero.
I make a motion that
Hold on, please, hold on.
Oh, you haven't finished reading it.
Just got to read it.
I'd already imagined that you had read it already, sorry.
Here you go. It's not an imagination.
Ordinance number 2186, an ordinance setting business license fees for limousines.
Now, Mr. McClung.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we, that we approve ordinance 2186 on its third and final reading.
Second.
Main negative. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Real call, wait, we got a real call?
Third read.
Third read. I never had that right yet.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Six zero.
Thank you. Moves us on to number six, discussion ordinance 2188, be the second read, motion to discuss. Mr. DeVito.
I'd like to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2188 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay. This one will get right. Stand by.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance 2188, an ordinance amending Eureka Springs Municipal Code to establish a 200-foot rule for all residential conditional use permits.
I'll take care of it.
I'm not reading that the same.
Is it 2188?
Extending 200-foot rule to all residential zones.
Conditional use permits.
Huh. This is the copy of the agenda I was given tonight.
Well, we've already read 2188 one time. For all residential conditional use permits, is that the one?
That's, yours doesn't say that either.
Don't say what?
All men says all residential zones.
Well, it's, it's the same.
That's it.
It's on the, it's on the ordinance.
All right, sorry about that.
No, okay.
It's just abbreviated on the agenda.
Okay.
And I can make a motion that we approve ordinance 2188 on a second reading.
The title only? Would that be correct?
Voice is okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, six zero.
Aye.
Moves us on to number seven, North Main restroom discussion, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Berry, you are, the man with the plan is in his hand right here. It was almost poetic, wasn't it?
Uh, welcome council members, glad to be back for you guys, in one respect or another.
Hi, George.
I think several weeks ago, y'all were given a packet that showed some plans and specifications for the North Main restrooms down there. We're getting close. Uh, we've got two bidders out there. Uh, I know somebody made a comment about how thick that is. Actually, that's a thin set. Uh, I tried to keep the specifications down to a minimum, put a lot of the specs on the drawings. I mean, we're dealing with a 224-square-foot restroom, so a single bathroom for men and women, uh, we've got automatic lights, automatic flushers, automatic hand wash, the fixtures on there, uh, so we're trying, it's actually pretty green, if we'd want to go through the whole process, we'd probably qualify for a green designation on these toilets. We're setting it up with stone, a three-foot-tall stone around the perimeter, because it is in a flood plain, flood zone, uh, and that's one of the requirements, is to make it impervious to the flooding that comes in. Although I did notice, when I went by last week during flooding, that portion wasn't flooding, it was down south, uh, on the parking lot that had some thing. Utilities are all going to be underground, there won't be any hard paving on the surface at the parking, we're not doing anything on there. And that's kind of it. Bid will be opened August 22nd, 2:00 p.m. in the mayor's office. Contractors, we've given them 75 days to complete the construction on there, which is, I think, a pretty liberal amount of time for it. Be basically stone and hardy board, tried to make it as much a maintenance-free project and also green, and requiring as least maintenance as we possibly maintenance as we possibly can. Metal roof to match the adjoining transit facility, waiting bus stop there. So, and it's right adjacent to the new musical theme park or musical park. And I've been seeing a lot of people parking down there, so I think it's probably going to be a great addition to that part of Main Street. Any questions? Terry.
Yeah, you've already got approval with the HDC guys.
Yes.
First thing done.
Roof and everything. Planning, HDC, we're fine.
Okay, all right. I don't like that.
Ms. Snyder.
It's probably a little too late, but just out of curiosity, when I finally, finally got to see the Grand Canyon in April, they had a bathroom that was his and her. Is there any special reason why we couldn't do that?
It is.
We are doing that.
No, 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 one room.
Oh, no, we don't want that.
To be shared, so to speak. You know what I mean?
We were thinking we'd be more popular than...
I didn't know if we had any new laws or anything. I'm thinking, taking up half space, I don't know.
No, I mean, you could, you could do a single unit, unisex toilet. We elected to make it both sectors.
So they haven't made laws, it's just the way we've matured.
Right. It's, it's hard to determine. You usually base that on the number of people that's in a business, but since that's a public area, it's, you know, we just decided, you know, make it a single home.
Because it was really incredible when I saw it. Of course, I had to take a picture and everything because I couldn't believe it, but, okay, yeah, maybe for the future, takes up half the space.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Misses number eight, discussion Land Bank. Floor's open. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right, now the floor's open. Go for it.
Well, you know...
That was brief, okay.
Yeah. Since we don't have parks here, and parks is really...
He was, did he leave?
He still should be here.
Is Bruce here? I mean, because he's really the one behind that.
There he is.
At least, he's not getting the back door.
And Mr. Featherstone.
Hello, Bill.
I'd like to open it up for either one of you, whoever would so like to do that, to discuss it, kind of lead us through this. Thank you.
Who is not familiar at all with the Land Bank, the Land Bank Committee, everything that's transpired to this point? I mean...
Could you give us a little rundown, just a short synopsis?
Okay. Very briefly, the Land Bank Committee was formed a few years ago ostensibly to inventory all of the green zone spaces in town, to catalog them, identify them, et cetera, et cetera. And as a result of that, the ordinance that Bruce is passing out to you right now has transpired as a means by which those properties can be handled in the future.
They're both the same thing.
And the Land Bank Committee is, it may be new to Eureka, but it is something that's been utilized, or something similar to it, that's been utilized in lots of communities. Do you want to keep talking?
Sure. You've got the floor.
I'm usually told to shut up, so it, it, you know, I've read it so many times that, and it seems like the more you read it, the more fault you find with it. It may not be a perfect document right now. You know, I would, I would lean on your legal representative pretty hard in that regard, but it's a great starting place. It, Park's perspective is that, you know, all of, all of these green zone spaces are of some critical nature to various things that we're currently working on or may work on in the future. They should be treated as such. That doesn't mean that you don't at times identify properties that are of no use and never will be of any use to Eureka, and you go about disposing of those properties, hopefully for financial gain to the city, and then utilize that money to spend on property that is not available to you currently, that could be of use to you. A lot of this has to do with the trail system that we currently have in place and that we're currently working on. Again, for those of you who are not, you know, privy to the extent to which we're working on the Trails program currently, hopefully by the end of this year, we'll have an urban Trails master plan in place that, that you formally adopt, one that we bring to you. And this Land Bank Committee is, is, is part of, it's, it's a tool that we can use to facilitate that endeavor.
Wait. Either one of you, you don't matter.
Question to the attorney. Have you viewed this yet, or is this to come to you still?
I believe this is the one I've seen, unless they've made any recent, real recent changes. Teeny recent changes, other than whatever the teeny recent changes are, I've seen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. McClung.
I'm still unclear on, on, on what you intend to do with, once, well, I suppose when your trail system is, is lined out, and then the streets that are, that are not suitable for trails or streets or, you know, that are green space, properties that, that still belong to the city, are you going to go ahead and, and diversify those to the property owners and be done with that and get them to the system?
Yes, that, I believe you're talking about category four, that is non-conforming open spaces.
Yeah, okay. I didn't know if that meant streets or not, but, but that does include...
It could be. But yes, we, the, the intent is to identify all of those properties and then, and then...
Device diverse yourself.
Convert to cash. Take that cash and use it for property that we can use.
Convert to cash, well, now, I don't think you can do that with streets.
Some you can, some you cannot. You want to speak to that?
There's, there's 320 acres that actually the city owns the deed to.
That were needed.
It's in the historic district mostly. It's section...
That was the deed.
Ten. Half section. But the rest of the streets are not. Yeah, well, I'm not, I'm not really sure that in the long haul, if you can really even do that, but that's, you know, not for me to say. I'm, I'm no liar. But then you also, you know, trying to sell those, let's see, where was I going with that there? The, I just don't think... I think they need to be, you know, done and given back to the property owners. And then you've also got certain encroachments and things of that nature that, that may or may not be, need to be addressed. Is that something you're considering as well?
I, I know where you're going.
You do?
Mr. McClung. Yeah, I know you long enough.
Could you tell me?
Is that, this, this actually doesn't address the, looking at the streets. This is mostly for the city properties that the city owns that are hither and yon, out in the outlands now. I think during the process of, of discovering where some of these places are, I think we're going to find the city streets. And I think the Trails Committee is going to be more effective in finding the streets, the green zones that are not needed for public use as in a trail. I think that's where, is that what you're talking about, where the streets...
Well, yeah, there's, I mean, there's a lot of streets that are not suitable. There'll be some streets that, that, that need to be retained because they could be open. You know, we had that discussion earlier this evening. So, I mean, I understand that, but there's going to be some that the city could retain utilities on, however, deed the property back to the property owners because it'll not be involved in the trail system.
And I don't think that's in this, in, in the Land Bank Committee. I don't think that's the...
Well, I think it needs to be comprehensive and cover everything.
Well, I think we've got a couple of committees that might work together. I think the Trails Committee is going to be more important in that, identifying that.
Well, but, but I think Bill just mentioned that, you know, your Trails Committee plans, you have a, a system that's, that's going to be mapped and ready to present. Is that not correct?
Correct.
So, you know...
Well, that, that wouldn't be our decision. I mean, that would be, if we, if we inventory all the streets, then I, I think the city council and the public would have an opportunity to see which streets are which and if you all want...
The reason, the reason I suggest this, because it does lighten your load in the future in that you've divested yourself from these and they're no longer there and you don't have to worry about them anymore. It's done, you got rid of them, it's over. That's all.
I find, after, based on the discussion earlier, and there's no way I want to go back and rehash that, so please don't think that. Section two, number one, unopened platted streets, areas that are designated as streets but only serving as green zones located in the 320 acres of Eureka Springs, which have been deeded to the city. I just want to point that out.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Snyder.
Back when, we were doing this before, when I thought we had finished it, wasn't there something in there in regards to a general price for when people wanted to buy an alley or an unused street area? You know, when they found out it was like in the middle of their property? Okay, so the city was going to give it up. Didn't we have a price tag on that?
Seems to me we did. I remember something about that.
Y'all remember what I'm talking about?
The, the city...
Now, this is like four or five or six years ago.
Yeah, there's, there's an ordinance that says it's fair market value or $200 per lot.
Yeah, the 200, yeah.
However, I think we found since then that, and maybe Mr. Weaver could correct me if I'm wrong, that most, all the streets outside that 320 acres, we are not allowed to sell.
Oh, okay.
We can lease them.
Okay, so we don't need any kind of a financial statement in here whatsoever, is what you're saying? I mean, we had it set at 200.
Yes, there are, is a set fee for...
Right, so that, oh, that's a separate ordinance from this.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
But that would be guidance for the streets inside the 320 acres that the city does not...
So we don't go to like 50,000 on a whim?
Well, it says fair market value.
If you can. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Any questions, Mr. Featherstone? Thank you, Bill. For discussion, Mr. DeVito.
I would make a motion to send this ordinance to the city attorney for his perusal and to change anything that is necessary.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Moves us on. Thank you, guys. Bruce, I think you're going to be, you're going to be here a while.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, we'll just get you. Might as well grab a chair, Bill. Moves to send a new business. First discussion is Black Bass in the website. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open.
Real quickly, we have a new website that's coming. We have a front page, we have some historical photographs of the dam, its first incarnation, second incarnation, and in its current state of disheavement, disrepair. And we're, I'm, I'm in the process of putting that, we want to get our... Okay, sorry. We want to get our...
Join us DM anytime soon.
We want to get our little hot button there for, for payment so that we can start raising funds, public funding, for the engineering, upfront engineering costs that we think we're going to have, so that we have a set of plans and specs that we can take to some contractors and get some order of magnitude costs so that we can at least understand what we're dealing with in terms of demolition or removal, decommissioning, repairing, repairing to an architectural standard or historical standard. And I guess that's it really, and, and those previous two probably, probably would be a couple of different variations. So, we're pretty close to it. We just got to go to parks, to the, and get our, we, we have the approval, but we have to get our number, our tax ID number, so that we can start getting funds put into one of the banks, the local banks here. And that's where we're at right now. We would hope that we could at least, this could be some seed money to get the city, you know, started thinking about repairing this particular structure.
Did you say you do have a website or it's upcoming?
It's upcoming. It's, it's, we're working on the front page right now. We do have it put together, but it's not active right now.
Give it press.
It's blackbassdam.org and blackbassdam.com, both of them.
Mr. McClung.
Mr. Perkypile, I think I may have asked you before, and I don't remember if I did, if there was an answer to it. What, is there a timeframe that you're trying to allow yourself as far as to hit a certain funding point or, or, you know, where you think that is a reasonable time because of safety issues at the dam, or is that, you're really not concerned with that at this point?
Yesterday. To be honest with you, it's, it's in a, in a serious state of disrepair, and to be serious about it, as soon as possible. We don't know how the funding's going to go, you know, how that is.
That's what I, that's why...
Reaching out for the public.
That's why I asked this, you know, do you think, I mean, it's, it's safe in allowing a year's time to, to try and generate the money to do something effectively, or, or is it 30 days, 60 days?
No, I think we're going to, we're, we're at least going to give it six months and see where we are. And if we have little or no interest in it, then, you know, we, we may have to come back and, and approach the city and say, you know, guys, we need to do something about this. But as far as the safety aspect of, of the dam, you know, ultimately, it comes down to protecting our water supply and, and whoever might be in the valley if it were to fail. We think that the residents living high up won't be impacted. However, there are, the rock houses immediately down at the bottom of the road, as you, if you were to turn right, maybe one or two of those would be impacted. One would at least. And, and those are nightly rentals, I believe, or they were at one time. So, to answer your question, Mr. McClung, I don't, I don't, I'm trying not to delay it any, any more than possible.
Okay, thank you.
Any further? No, thank you, sir. Move on to number two, be the reread slash discussion, resolution number 618. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Yes, sir.
I'm very involved with the, this issue, both on the city council standpoint and, and personally. I think what we passed, resolution 618, is, is a very solid resolution. I hope you've all had a chance to reread it. The topic has come up occasionally. It was brought to me through the Save the Ozarks Committee. When I told them of the wordage in there, it pretty much allayed all their fears. There's a very small handful of people that still may have some concerns. I don't know if those particular people have read it, but when I've showed it to everyone, they've been satisfied by it. Don't just focus on the list of significant tourism assets that are listed here. What follows speaks to the issue of concern and its environs. So that pretty well addresses the area as a whole, so I feel that we had, did a very good job with a very good resolution, and I applaud everyone that voted for it.
Ms. Snyder.
All we wanted to do is reread, which could have already been done while you were saying that. All we have to do is read the first two lines and the now, therefore, that's all they want to know. They don't need the list in the middle, they need the resolution for that part and the now, therefore. That's all we need read. Reread, we're not changing anything.
Okay.
Can I read it? Can I read it? That's what's on the agenda.
You're just reading it into the record.
Yeah, for the public to hear and understand, okay. "A resolution in opposition to the proposed SWPCO 345 KV transmission lines located in the Eureka Springs area, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas that the city council opposes the transmission lines in the Eureka Springs area, passed and resolved this 30th day of April 2013." And Eureka area, of course, is all over.
Okay.
Thank you.
Move this on to number four, be the discussion, second quarter financials.
So moved, discuss.
Second.
Floor is open.
Who put this on there?
So it said...
The law put it on.
Actually, state statute 1443-506, put it on. And here's the second quarter financials, minus the debt service book, which is living in the finance director's office, I forgot to pick it up. This is bank reconciliation, payroll for the first six months, the cash receipts, and the clearing account that is not payroll. And this will be in the clerk's office and the debt service book, which we're interested in, does live in Lonnie's office.
Questions? Wow, thank you. Move this on to number five, is the geese issue at Lake Leatherwood City Park? Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Is Butch still here? I mean, not Butch, but, okay. Bruce, Bruce Butch, they're close.
Got a great picture of the little baby geese.
Good, tastes good sauteed.
They're great as babies and they make great dinner.
Go ahead.
Geese, geese have become problematic at Lake Leatherwood, and it's been that way for a while, but it's continuing to get worse and worse. Specifically, we have a resident, non-migratory flock of geese that hang out in and around the bathhouse, the swim beach, the south end of the lake. And it's not the geese that are the problem. We all love geese. Let the record show that the Parks Commission to a person loves all of God's creatures, including geese. It's the goose poop that's the issue, and it really is an issue. If you've not been to the swim area of Leatherwood recently, you might be appalled to know that there's a yellow tape around the sandy area. The E. coli count in that area is registering higher than the state is capable of reading it. So, we don't know how bad the E. coli is, but it's bad. And it's, this is really an issue of people or public, I mean, geese or public. So, we've tried many things over the years, they've largely been ineffective, and as a commission, we had a very spirited discussion in this regard at our last meeting that was well noted by one of our local papers. And we resolved that we would readdress all the means necessary that are available to us comprehensively and have an actionable plan that we put into place and with a timeline, there's a timeframe, there's a deadline to get some quantifiable results. And if it works, great, resolves the problem, all the better. If not, then part of the plan will be what to do if the plan does not work. But, yes.
Could you please elucidate what that plan might be?
I can't, but, but we will be able to tell you after our regular meeting in September. Two of our commissioners have volunteered to put together this goose management plan.
Is that more like extermination? Or removal?
I can't speak for them, but the reality of it is that if you have a comprehensive plan that takes into account best case scenario, worst case scenario, that has to be part of the plan. But it's, in the view of the commission, at least at this point, that is a last resort. And it will only get to that point if we, as a commission, on behalf of the community, decide that it's more important to have the geese there than it is the use of the facilities that they're currently discouraging us from using.
Ms. Snyder.
What's the possibility of trapping, caging, and driving them to someplace out in the boonies that isn't around people so we don't dump our problem on them? But you know, out in the wilderness, and I'll volunteer to drive if we can find a place that's far enough that they won't fly. I want to go to Canada so bad. But you know, where it's far enough where they won't fly back, but at the same time they'll be, still be out in nature, away from people?
That's a good point. It is one we've considered in the past, we have not done. It is one that other communities have chosen to try with some success. If you don't take them far enough, they will come back.
Is the Grand Canyon far enough?
That would be far enough. But at the same time, and you hit on it, you don't want to make your problem somebody else's problem either, you know?
But that's what I was thinking there.
Does Arkansas Game and Fish have a goose eradication management program type thing?
They have an allowance for a goose hunt for 20% of the population per year.
But they don't have like a comprehensive management program like you're talking about developing here?
Not that I'm aware of. You want to speak to that?
They do, and I think that's part of what the committee of the commission is gonna put together, is gonna gather all that information and come up, and it's pretty much standardized. It's, you know, disturbance tactics, pyrotechnics.
Oh, okay.
Stop feeding, that kind of thing, but they're gonna put together.
So, we could feel comfortable then that Arkansas Game and Fish will be actively consulting?
They'll have to be part of it.
Thank you.
This may make you have a little more level of comfort. One of the two commissioners that is putting this actionable goose management plan together was here previously on another issue. And she's, she's very thorough, as you've probably figured out. So, I fully anticipate that this goose management plan will incorporate everything known to whomever that's been down this road before. And it will either, once it's put into effect, it'll either work or it won't. But part of the plan is, if it doesn't work, this is what we do.
Anybody else? Thank you. Move on to number six, is one day permanent fireworks at Lake Leatherwood Park? Motion to discuss.
Second.
Just let him herd them.
Floor is open.
Do it further, though.
Fireworks.
Yes, fireworks.
Okay. We had someone you know very well approach us recently wanting exclusive use of part of the park on a Wednesday, the 21st of August? Yeah. A very slow day at Leatherwood. Kids are back in school, midweek, that kind of thing. They had a very generous offer for, in exchange for the exclusive use of part of the park, that being the meadow close to the swim area, the swim area, that general locale. And we had another fairly spirited discussion at our last meeting in this regard, and it mostly revolved around one of their requests. Pretty much all of their, everything they requested was very reasonable, with one exception, and that is, they wanted to have a professional fireworks display. And they wanted to do it over the lake, much the same as we did for a number of years several years ago. Again, it would be professional, it would be from a dock that they would purchase and subsequently donate to parks for its permanent installation, which is something we've, it's on our, it's in, it's part of our master plan for Leatherwood. But we ended up voting, I believe, correct me, gosh, we went back and forth, four to one? Four to one in favor of a one-time exception, or recommending a one-time exception to our fireworks ban within the city limits on that date, nine o'clock that evening, the 21st, yes.
Why did we quit that? Was it because of contamination?
We, it was funded by the CAPC and we lost our funding, and kind of at the same time, Holiday Island and Turpentine Creek kind of picked up fireworks, and so the combination of those two things is...
So it wasn't, it didn't have anything to do with the residue from the fireworks or anything?
We're not aware of any impact to the environment. I'm not saying there wasn't any, but we were never made aware by our own inspections or the comments from others about anything negative in that regard, yeah.
I don't see anything wrong with it.
I'll make a motion to allow one-time fireworks display at Lake Leatherwood Park on August 21st.
If I got my date right, that should be a Wednesday.
Second.
Ms. Snyder.
Are we gonna have any kind of loophole, so to speak, in case we are desperately dry?
That's a week away.
Or if it's, if it's shooting off from a dock, and I know they've done this before because I could always hear when they ended, are they shooting long ways on the lake? So we don't have to worry about it going across and hitting trees and...
It pretty much goes vertical, but, but part of our recommendation to you was for them to have it approved by the fire marshal in advance.
Okay.
Yes, and so that would be part of that process.
Great, no problem.
Well, this is gonna be a private display, isn't it? This is not gonna be public.
That's a, that's a, that's a great question, and that was part of the debate at our table. It is a private party, but it, but it will attract, according to Jack Moyer, upwards to 300 people. It's for the historic hotel, all the historic hotels, their employees. Apparently, it's an annual event they have, and they'd like to do it at Leatherwood this year.
Maybe the geese will leave. There you go.
I'm gonna guess the geese will, will temporarily relocate that night.
Any further?
Perhaps permanently.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Like, sign the motion, carry it.
Thank you.
All right, and move this on to number seven, which is by the agenda line on Leatherwood Road.
Move to discuss, second.
Floor is open.
I think we discussed this at the last meeting. We did get our bids from the Lake Leatherwood Road repair, and the low, the apparent low bidder is 149,000, which is better than we had expected. We expect to spend at least five to eight, having an engineering firm supervise the road repair and the laying of the surfacing material, asphalt. And I don't know if we're going in absolutely needed, but it would be really, it would give me a lot of comfort to know that we had the availability of $45,000 that we could borrow. And then, as I showed in the spreadsheet last time, we would pay it back and we would, the last payment back would be in December. And the finance director seemed to feel that it would, that's something that could fly. So, the reason this all came about is we didn't realize that our tax revenue wasn't going to start until July. Yes, sir?
Does Parks mind paying a uterus rate of interest?
You're evil.
I don't think we can pay interest. I think that's a legal loophole, although we certainly would if we could.
Any further discussion on it?
Do we need a motion?
Do we need a motion to approve this?
I guess I believe so.
I move that we approve an amount up to what the Parks Director just said, $45,000. Is that appropriate? Be made available to Parks as a...
Bridge loan.
Bridge loan for the Leatherwood Road. Second.
Construction.
May I second, any further discussion?
Should we potentially amend that, that it will, that the loan will be paid back by December, or so it's not open-ended, please?
Said loan to be paid back by the end of December 2013.
So it'll be enough time?
That's what he said.
Okay.
This is just his buffer.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, yes, thank you very much. You bet. Move this on to, yes, ma'am?
Can I ask a question on recycle conference? Do you know what's upcoming?
I had...
I don't want it in comments.
Not on the agenda.
I just want to know, are we going?
Solid waste, no, probably.
What?
Solid waste, probably, no.
I just, okay, I just want to know if we, as council, were going or helping host or something.
Not been notified of anybody attending yet.
A what? Recycle conference held here in September.
Okay, then move this on to agenda setting, Mr. DeVito.
I'm so excited.
Uh, no items.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes, I'd like to force to consider a workshop on the 2014 budget sometime late October, November.
Second.
What was the date, sir?
Based on the finance director, either to be in late October, the early November.
So you're moving to discuss next week?
Is there anything else?
Yes, sir, one or more.
Okay, sorry.
Workshop on the, it's not demolition by neglect anymore, it'll be clean city, but we need to have a discussion on the clean city ordinance and have a workshop on it somewhere at the end of Octo, the end of August, I'm sorry.
End of August. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further, Mr. Mitchell?
No, sir.
And Mr. Perkypal?
No, don't have any right now.
Ms. Snyder.
Are we going to, do we need to add into the agenda a discussion, a wrap-up of the community discussion in regards to closing Spring Street? That's what everybody thought was this week, are we going to do that at the next meeting? So something we, somebody was supposed to be doing this, I don't know.
I don't know.
I'd like a consensus on it because I would like to get rid of this problem, and that's why I brought it up tonight. I would like, now, if this isn't, if this hasn't sat well with everybody, there's no point in putting it on the agenda, but I would like this on the agenda so we can postpone it for this session of the city council because it's causing so much anxiety among the Spring Street merchants and the, I'm tired of hearing about it. I mean, you get calls about it, I get calls about it, maybe because they think McKinnon and I are the only two that understand the problem here, but the feeling is that if they don't stay on the ball and watch like a hawk all the time, that somehow or other, this thing is going to get sneaked in and be passed and Spring Street will be closed while they're not watching. And what it really means is such a financial sacrifice for the people that are on the wrong side of the street that I can see their point. You know, they're not gonna do any business that day. If you're on the side of the street where there aren't any parking meters, you're gonna make like a...
Point of order, point of order.
Okay, anyhow, that's...
I would like to add to next meeting's agenda, a discussion of what was said at the community meeting on this and the possibilities of what we, as a city council, may or may not be able to do because...
Ms. Eller, just speak you to it.
No, because we may not, as council, be able to make a decision on that. That might be yours. The second thing I would like is a short discussion of the recycle conference coming up at the end of September. Find out if we're gonna be involved, and maybe in the meantime, someone can check and see if we're supposed to be involved.
You want that on the agenda?
Yeah, just a quick discussion of if we're gonna be involved or not. If your assistant will check and see if they're expecting us to be involved or not. Okay, well, so, those two things, and then I'm good.
Anybody else?
Second on Mickey's.
There's, there needs to be a second on Mickey's.
Oh.
Ms. Snyder's, both of the issues. Second on both?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Eller? Ms. Eller?
That's all I had.
Okay. All right, moves on to council comments, Mr. DeVito.
No comment.
Mr. McClung?
Just one thing, you know, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but it's not really a dead one yet, I just, I have some real concerns on the 80 Mountain Street Theater situation, and just what I've read from the comments from the representative of the Crescent Hotel on Geek Fest, and then, and then subsequent, which I thought was his interpretation, and subsequently, I've heard other things that, so I just, you know, I just, with the way I've read the ordinance, and the way it's defined in there, that, I don't know, I just have some real problems, and so I just, you know, but it just, it needs real sincere attention.
Anything else? Okay, Mr. Mitchell?
No, brief response to Alderman McClung, and I understand your concerns, and I think by referring it back to planning for them to focus in on the area, and some of that is wise, that councils stay away from certain issues until various commissions that are vested with the responsibility have the opportunity to address the issue in its totality.
That it's-
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perkypal?
I'd like to remind everybody, August 19th, Town Hall Meeting's pretty important. You know, if you want to speak your piece, and if you're a citizen of the city of Eureka Springs, please come forward, and you have some time, and we'll answer, hopefully, we'll answer many of the questions, kind of lay out what we plan to do, some of the priorities that we've, we've identified as being important for the city, and we want, we want some feedback from you. So that's next Monday at 6:30, 6:30 to 8:30 at the auditorium.
Mr. Schneider?
I'd like to speak for a second on behalf of my brother-in-law Greg, who had the railway winery, and I'm using the word past tense, had, totally, 100%, devastated and destroyed in the amazing rain we had very quickly, late Wednesday night, early Thursday morning. Any of you who are going to be out anywhere in any water that's near the Beaver Town area, if you happen to see furniture, refrigerators, wine vats, anything and everything that looks like it belonged in a building, if you could call me, let me know, or call the Chamber of Commerce. So far, my brother-in-law and my husband have found one vat, one, and everything else, it's gone, and, oh, yeah, we're talking 10 years of effort. I'm very sorry, Greg, it was neat, but it got inundated. And just the helpful hint for the week, as good as pomegranate juice is for you, it is not nice on a fresh cut. It burns. Keep cuts away from pomegranate juice.
I didn't give very much.
It hurts.
Ms. Eller?
No.
Thank you, ma'am.
I had no clue.
Okay, the only thing I have is some events, August 15th through the 17th is Bluegrass Weekend, August 23rd through the 25th is VW Weekend, August 28th is a Benjo Rally, August 19th is a Town Hall Meeting. That's all I have, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Outstanding.